Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Worcester City Council scheduled for this Monday, September 18th, 2017. It is after 7:30 PM. The next regularly scheduled council meeting will be October 2nd of 2017. If you would, Mr. Paul, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ansel.
Here.
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Ms. Knappich.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Silvestri.
Here.
Mr. Albrecht.
And the agenda will remain as presented. And I'd ask you to stand and join the members of City Council in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll look to someone to make a motion to approve the minutes from the September 5th, 2017 council meeting.
Son.
Motion by Mr. Silvestri, seconded by Ms. Knappich. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. September 5th, 2017, minutes are approved. Mr. Mayor, welcome. Here you have some good news for us today.
We do have some great news. In fact, I brought all of you copies. If you haven't heard already, sending down the ranks, but I'll tell you, the old saying is everybody gets 15 minutes of fame while we, I think, have surpassed that in our community here in the last two months. We got the news today that Money Magazine said that they thought our town was a pretty special place to be. In fact, they named us number 37 on the 2017 100 Best Places to Live in the United States of America. So Worcester, Ohio is number 37 as far as the folks at Money Magazine. Just to give you a comparison, we were number 37, so in fact, we were the only Ohio city in the top 50 in the nation. Number 56 was Westchester, Ohio, which is a suburb of the Cincinnati area, I believe. Number 66 is Powell, Ohio, and 71 is Delaware, Ohio. And those are the only Ohio cities that made the top 100 list for 2017. So that is a very nice honor. It sort of is icing on the cake because last Tuesday, or the Tuesday just after our last council meeting, September 6th, Heritage, Ohio was here to view our community because of our Main Street organization. It's one of the oldest in the state of Ohio, and they think that we are doing things right here on our Main Street. So the whole crew came and had a meeting down at our public library, and then Sandra and her team put together a progressive dinner, and we went to four restaurants in the downtown throughout the night with about 40-some people. So a lot of fun with that, so another accolade there. And then on September 12th, last Tuesday, Ohio Magazine was in town and took pictures for the article of one of Ohio's best hometowns for 2017. So that'll run in the November 2017 edition here in the next couple of months. So lots of good things happening in our city. I was asked to do a homework assignment for you. We were going to have it up on the screen, but unfortunately, we had a technical glitch because it didn't get to Jonathan early enough to help me out. So my apologies that we don't have it up on the screen. But here's sort of a graphic that you can look at. I'll try to explain. This is our South Well Field in the city. Right here, there's a little green X. That's actually our water plant. This blue dot up here, closest to Old Columbus Road, is our S1, or South Number One Well. This second dot is S2, and S3 is this dot here. These are our three production wells in our South Well Field. And are carrying most of the city. We still do utilize the North Well Field occasionally and exercise it, but really, the majority of our water supply for the city are coming from those three wells. This gives you an idea that this is a huge gravel pack ranging anywhere from 150 to 200 feet thick. Old glacial till, about the best aquifer you can ask for. Break flow through it. It's being recharged by underground sandstone layers, and also the Kilbuck Creek that comes down through is a recharge area. Where the pipelines are in comparison, this red one here is called the Rover Pipeline. It's a 42-inch natural gas pipeline. It's one of two. This one is actually mostly in the ground in our area, although there are areas that are not in the ground, but it won't be commissioned and being utilized for probably a number of months yet. The other is the Utopia Line, which is a 12-inch liquid line, supposedly carrying ethanol or ethane, I'm sorry, ethane, and possibly propane from that. This is one that comes across State Route 3, just about where 226 and 3 come together. They did a big road board there. Comes down the leveled land to the bottoms and then comes across the tracks. And this is where I'm not positive where it goes. I haven't actually walked it, but I know it's down close to the Rover Pipeline, and it's about that far from our city wells. The Rover Pipeline's probably close to a mile south of S3 Utopia. Guesstimate is slightly less, maybe three quarters of a mile south. This was the concerning piece for us in the administration because of the proximity to our freshwater zones. Our gravel pack extends the whole way down through and past prairie lanes and down into what people call the Kilbuck Swamps down there. They're street swamps. And that is a great freshwater zone. We were trying to encourage Utopia specifically because it's not per-per regulated. Rover is per-regulated, and the chances of getting that moved are very, very difficult. So we didn't feel we had much opportunity to influence the Rover Line. It is further south. It doesn't bother me as a geologist as much because Rover's carrying a natural gas, so if you do have a rupture in the line, it will volatilize up and not get into your water zone. Utopia carrying liquids, if it would have a leak in the line, will not volatilize it. It will stay in that groundwater area. So this was the biggest concern. We really were trying to drive it about another mile or so south, and were not successful in getting them to change their route. This is something that we talked about. Okay, how hard do we push on this? Because we could've done the legal thing and gotten into a pretty good size battle. I think we would've probably lost, and that's the reason we didn't try to pursue it a little harder. But here's the real reason we didn't try to pursue it so hard. There are two factors that are affecting the water in this aquifer for us. One is the Kilbuck Stream, and it is flowing south. So all the water that's up in here is heading towards the bottom of this map and away from our water field. This pipeline is located south of our water field now, and foreseeably, in the future, we may drill another well down a little bit further south. We do have some land there, so we do have future growth in this prospect. But if they would have a rupture or a leak in the line itself and it got into the surface water, that would all flow away from us, so it would preserve our freshwater zone. Now, the trouble with this line, both of these lines actually, is they have to be underneath the railroad bed. And I heard that they are required to be 30 feet below the railroad bed, so they're way down in that water zone. So the bigger fear is, what if they have a leak underground? That will be right in the freshwater zone. Well, we are very lucky because the modeling that they've done over the past few decades on our aquifer is that all the water in that is actually traveling south also. So the flow in that gravel pack that's 200 feet below the surface is all heading south also. So if there would be a leak, it will also be taking the contaminant away from our freshwater zone. And once we realized that and knowing what kind of a legal battle that would be, we decided it was probably a safe enough prospect at this point that we could live with it as an administration. So that's the latest and greatest. Utopia is farther along in the prospect. Most of their line in this area is in the ground. The last I've heard, they were up in the Norwalk area and going towards the northwestern corner of our state, up towards Michigan. Rover still has pieces that are above ground, pieces below. It's not as far along as the Utopia system, but neither pipeline are in business at this point in time as far as any transport. So any questions?
I just wondered, after, I understand what you're saying, is there any danger to the communities south of us?
There's always, you know, an inherent danger. They do have a very strong protocol for safety on the intrastate and interstate pipelines. So they do have emergency shut-offs and those kind of things. So I don't want to be an alarmist because I have worked in the industry and understand it, but can you have a break at some point? Accident, so to speak. Sure, you always can. The next community down would be Shreve, and that's a pretty strong distance down the way. So I think that they would be all right also in this scenario right now. Anything else about the pipelines that you guys are interested in?
Rover.
Yeah, you bet. Just a couple of other things. Thank you for coming to the utility open house tonight. I think you guys and lady were hopefully impressed with the kind of facility that we were able to achieve from that purchase off of ODOT for a very reasonable sum. And last note, we grieve with the College of Worcester at the loss of one of their athletes here over the weekend. A real tragedy, and I know that they are doing soul-searching up on the Hill on how to deal with the loss of someone so young. So we are very sorry for that tragedy and wish them the best. So with that, I'll turn the meeting back over to you, Mr. Ray.
Thank you, and thank you for taking the time to explain the pipeline. I assume the Utopia is going to be under high pressures, so any blowouts going to be fairly self-evident in a short order.
Both are close to 1,500-pound operational pressures, so absolutely, yeah, if there would be something, I think it would be apparent quickly.
And I assume a spark would help volumize the Rover.
Hopefully, yeah, that we don't ever find that one out.
Exactly. All right, thanks again. Petitions and communications from the public, what we'll first do, there's a notice of a new liquor permit from the Dollar, Family Dollar Store for the Liberty Street location. If you would please read that, Mr. Paul.
Sure. Family Dollar Stores of Ohio Inc., doing business as Family Dollar, store number 8561, 239 West Liberty Street, Worcester, Ohio 44691. It's a new permit. They're looking for Class C1 and C2.
Let's be carried out soon. You're in line, probably. I don't think they'll be serving it inside. So as you will probably recall, because we've gone through this quite a few times, we have three choices. We can, let's see, request a hearing here, request a hearing in Columbus, or waive the hearing altogether. What's your pleasure?
I have motion to waive hearing, Mr. President.
Motion to waive hearing by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Could you please call the roll on the waiver of the hearing?
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Albrecht.
All right, motion passes. Would you let the Department of Liquor Control know we're waiving the hearing, please? Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
I thought maybe I could squeeze in a reminder here that on October the 2nd, prior to that, at 6:30, we're scheduled to have an infrastructure committee meeting at 6:30 on October the 2nd.
All right, so mark that on your calendars.
Thank you.
Communications from the public, Carol Eberark, do you want us to talk about miscellaneouss?
Oh, no, I thought the mayor might bring up the pipeline during that time. That's why I signed up.
Okay, do you want to have any comments or questions since you were here last week?
Well, you mentioned that at that time that there wasn't much use in the council even talking about this because it was under federal control. A lot of communities, whether that's true or not, have at least made a statement that the objections that, like, are running through water supply, et cetera. I thought at least the council could make a public statement that they objected to the fact that it is crossing our water system. I don't know about the water flowing south. I think we've got something in the water that disperses. Maybe the flow goes south, but poor people are treating that if that goes down through the water supply. It may not go over our well field, or it's being moved down a little farther from it though when it goes over your option for where this well field gets water. And that, of course. So I'm concerned about that. There's also a concern that why it took all this time for the council to get a presentation about the pipeline, it's coming like after the fact, after things are going through, and not before the fact, before when there was a little more time to object to these companies. So I just wanted to say that. And I have a picture of our aquifer that we're talking about. This is where the water is, and maybe you know, there shows that. This is our largest supply of water. And in this article, I gave you all a copy of that, it was published in a paper, said we're fine. He was a little concerned about if another industry would like to come to the area that would need water. But then at the end, he says, well, the pipeline's out of the way, it's out of the way from the city's main water source, and so Worcester needs to draw another well. So, you know, I talked to my youngest daughter about this, who thought of coming to this area, and she says, you know, if something's going to influence the water supply, people that want to come to your area certainly can be really concerned about that. Who wants to move into an area where there could be any damage to the water supply? You know, what happens from foot Michigan, just from the lead problem they have up there in their water? What happens to profit values and taxes on it, what? I'm really concerned, and I think people need to start thinking about their water systems as more important than pipelines or just supply Canada. We're running, you know, freshwater is a danger in a lot of places, which you probably noticed on the news. When do we stop? You know, where does it stop that we don't protect these systems? You'll read my letter, this is part of what goes back to then, is protecting the common, the water, the air, the land usage. So anyway, this is my comment. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Garrus has two things he wanted to speak on.
Mr. Garrus, 347 North Grass Street. Last council meeting discussion in the corner was primarily about the issue of Union Police Lieutenant's Captain's Card, is how they seek counsel or counseling from their superiors, if they would, what kind, would it be from Internal Affairs? That's currently run, I think, by the police chief. And so I'm wondering if you're aware of the fact that at the federal level, at the Senate and the House, this very internal affair to civilian oversight is discussion right now, topic of discussion. It would be eventually a federal law that all counties would have an Internal Affairs Office run by civilian oversight. That would eliminate the discussion and questions you had, Mr. Paul, right with this issue. And if it's something you'd like to think about now, it's up again this evening, the ordinance 2017-27, if it's addressing that at all, Ms. Knappich, maybe you'll have those answers for us. But it's actually something that I think is going to be fairly elite. It's going to have Department of Justice, Fife behind it, feet behind it, and all police and all sheriff deputies will fall under this civilian oversight. And it's something to think about next year, which leads me to the next and last question. A concern is the 2017-28 issue tonight, which might come up, it might not come up or pass into the first reading, but here again, next year, assuming that once that new Kingdom Tax Law takes effect, all tax abatements will eventually have to be applied to the state. So you may want to think about those, Mr. Vager, because until then, tax abatements will become null and void, and you'll have to reapply. Just something to think about. Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Many reports, I don't think we've had any committee meetings. We do know that Mr. Albrecht's going to have an infrastructure meeting on October 2nd. Any, anything else?
The Accounts Receivable Management Committee met at 11:00, and there were a number of accounts receivable under $2,000 that have become uncollectible either by the statute of limitations or bankruptcy, so means by law, we can't collect on them. And those were decided to write them off, get them off our books, because we still have to reflect them as account receivable for balance sheet purposes, but since they're not collectible, it really is a false amount. And I think there were four that were over $2,000 that because of the statute, it's going to have to come from council to give us, give council the approval to write them off, even though they're uncollectible. And I had asked Ms. Applebaum to maybe amend that ordinance where if it's, even though it's more than $2,000, as long as it's not permitted to be collected by law, that we don't need the extra step to have council then approve what is already, law has already decided that we can't go after them.
Just curious what the total dollar amount that the committee wrote off?
It was...
Like 41,000?
It was 41,000 for ARs and...
That included, there was, I think, four...
Right, and then there was another 45,000 for things like damages, and I forget what was it?
Yeah, the bankruptcy with assault purchase.
Yeah.
And then there's, you know, somebody hits our attenuator and does damage to that, and then four street signs, street poles, and miscellaneous damage going back to 1999.
So, and you know, and there are some people who period are uncollectible, but all those that were written off are either by law because of the period of time to get the collection has been passed, or the individuals or companies involved have gone bankrupt, which means it's been discharged by bankruptcy. And some of those, we've been carrying for like 15 years, so.
1999.
Why?
So, we made some people in the accounting department very happy that they can finally, once and for all, write those off. And as Mr. Dordia pointed out, keeping them on our books basically is a violation of the law since they don't accurately reflect our true receivable amounts. So that's what went on, and it was a very exciting meeting. Old business. Now we get to old business. No?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll have the second reading or not of ordinance 2017 dash 26. We're going to have the second reading for this one, right?
Yes.
So if you would, please read the timeline.
Ordinance number 2017 dash 26, an ordinance amending Part 1 of the codified ordinances of the city of Worcester, Ohio, to provide for amendments and new sections to Title 5, Chapter 133, Civil Service Rules and Regulations.
Ms. Knappich, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. We discussed this at our last meeting. These are some civil service rules that needed to be updated. Safety Services Division's requested these changes, and they've been approved by the Civil Service Commission. The main issues that were involved are legal updates and clarifications, an update to part-time to comply with the ACA changes, and updates for safety services, hiring and testing, allowing for lateral hiring, and things like that. I don't think there was much dissent to this piece of legislation. It was necessary in order to bring our civil service rules compliant with some of the federal laws, so I'll open it up for a discussion.
I had one question. It seemed the extension of the probationary period from 90 days to one year seemed to be maybe a little long.
Well, I'll let the chief address that, the question of extending the probationary period from 90 days to a year.
Are you talking about for promotions, Mr. Vager?
Yes, I am.
The problem that we have, in fact, is right now, the officers are working a 12-hour shift, so realistically, you work 14 days a month. So if you're only working, and the 90 days is 90 calendar days, so if you're only working 14 days a month and you take two weeks of vacation, that's a very, very short window to evaluate someone as a supervisor.
Why? Yeah, I guess you missed my point. I was wondering why we would go, jump all the way from 90 to a year, as opposed to something maybe in between. That was my...
I can tell you, in discussions that I had with the union, and they stated some looking into it as well, one year seems to be kind of the standard in the industry. So that was the thinking, going to the one year.
I was just curious, is, you know, after six months, I would think you should have a feel for whether or not some of these are viable for the position that you've already decided to elevate it to.
You know, I don't disagree with you, but I guess the flip side of that coin is, people can be on their best behavior, quote-unquote, for a certain amount of time, but I don't believe that you can keep that up for a year. Where maybe you're working at a higher capacity or elevated, that, you know, you might be able to keep that up for a number of months, but at some point, that's going to drop off, and maybe that's when you start to get down to the real person if you want.
I like the idea that it's in compliance with other police departments that 90 days, or 100, excuse me, one year seems to be the standard of what everyone... day, or a hun- excuse me, one year seems to be the standard of what everyone does, and having an HR background, I think that, my feeling is generally that a longer probationary period is better.
One question with that, Chief. I know part of the changes that you're requesting here have to do with lateral hires from other communities, and the fact that, you know, we want to give each of our applicants the best shot and not have someone miss out on an opportunity simply because of a lateral type situation like you, like you gave the example earlier. So I guess my question with that is, with, with the question that was just asked, what are some of the things that hinge on that probation? Is pay or full compensation something held in the balance with that?
No, the, currently in the collective bargaining agreement, the contract, those pay, pay cycles, basically those step increases occur yearly.
Right.
So, so those things fall, a, a one-year probationary period falls right in line with that collective bargaining agreement of where those pay bumps would hinge. So they're, again, somebody getting promoted and serving a one-year probation shouldn't have any effect on whether or not they get their, if you want to call it a step increase or their bump as they go.
So it sounds like the most important piece is full vetting into the union, is that part of...
Listen, I, I would agree. I mean, I think that you want to make sure that you have the right, the right person in the job. You know, once, once an individual is, is cemented in the union, you know, the analogy I use is a rusty nail. It drives a good piece of wood pretty easy and she pulls out kind of tough. So it's, you want to make sure that you have the right person in that position, that they're the right fit for you.
But when you say probation, that is really the single piece to that is, is full vestige into the union?
Correct.
Okay, so there's no other pieces?
And there's also, I'm sure you're aware, there's, we did some changes to the probationary for new hires too, just to make sure that we are, you know, we had kind of a strange incident. We had an individual we hired was in the police academy, through no fault of his own, hurt his ankle, got washed out, had to roll back in, and was still in his FTO program when he came off probation. So that's why one of the changes was to make that probationary period for new hires start their first day of FTO, so that we don't run into a situation like that again.
Wait, wait to start the clock.
Right.
Gotcha.
Okay, makes sense. Any other questions or concerns? If not, I will move to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Canapick is there a second? Second by Mr. Sanders, would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Canapick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Orders have been suspended, Ms. Canapick.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Canapick is there a second? Second by Mr. Ansel. Any further comments, questions? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Canapick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Orders number two thousand seventeen dash twenty-six passes. We have ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash twenty-seven scheduled for a second reading. Would you please read the title on this?
Ordinance number twenty seventeen dash twenty-seven, an ordinance amending Chapter one sixty-two, Management Benefits of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Canapick, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you very much. As you recall from our last meeting, we had discussed the addition of two jobs into the city. One is as an, an assistant police chief, setting up the police department to be similar to the fire department with the chief and an assistant police. The job title will align the management structure in the safety services, and we had some discussion about that last week. The other addition would be for a human resources coordinator. This was a position that was taken out when there was quite a bit of downsizing, when things were tight here at the city. And now with adding WARCOG and some other things into the city, there's a need to add this human resources coordinator position back into the city. This person would, currently we've got two full-time staff in the HR department, which has usually been up to four-time, four employees at certain times. And again, the WARCOG has added additional work to, to the HR department, so there is a need for an additional person. However, after discussing this at the last meeting, and then some, some questions arose from my fellow council members between meetings, there's been a, a request to actually table this and bifurcate these issues so that we can talk about the police issues under one piece of legislation and the HR issues under another piece of legislation. And in, so I'm going to make that motion tonight that we table this and bifurcate the pieces of legislation, or the piece of legislation from one into two, and that would give people an opportunity to get all of the information that they feel that they need to get on both issues, the police and the HR coordinator, before we go forward, take it off the table, and make any decisions.
So I'll take that as a motion to table by Ms. Canapick, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the tabling of ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash twenty-seven.
Kevin?
Yes.
Canapick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
We'll consider ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash twenty-seven, and my marching orders from Ms. Applebaum, she said we need to direct her from the Council of Dias here to bifurcate those two ordinances and separate them out into two distinct ordinances. So now you have your...
I will have them on the next council agenda.
Now you have your marching orders and Ms. Applebaum. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Canapick.
Thank you.
Excellent. That brings us now to our new business, which is Resolution number two thousand seventeen dash forty. It'll be presented by Mr. Albright. It deals with agreement with the State of Ohio, so that's why the ordinance isn't in the typical form, but I think since we're entering into agreement and it hadn't been budgeted, we do need to suspend the rules when ultimately, if we want to pass it tonight. Before I get to you, Mr. Albright, if Mr. Apollo would read the title, I would appreciate it.
Resolution number twenty seventeen dash forty, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the resurfacing of State Route eighty-three within the City of Worcester and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Albright, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, just to pick up on that last statement and expand a little bit, resurfacing of State Route eighty-three for Burbank Road from just south of Milltown Road to north of the Roundabout, which of course goes right through the heart of our north and commercial area, and a lot of traffic in that air, in that area. The estimated total cost is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If we were to authorize the Director of Administration, the mayor, to enter into the cooperative agreement with ODOT, ODOT would supply roughly sixty percent, pardon, eighty percent of this cost, roughly six hundred and eighty thousand. Our funds, local funds, would approximately be twenty percent of the cost, or about one hundred and seventy thousand out of the capital fund account. We have done this before. I want to applaud the Engineering Department, Roger Pogorasek and others, who constantly are looking for these kinds of arrangements, these kinds of benefits, and being very quick to recognize them and act on them. And I applaud him for doing that, and everyone else that had something to do with it. It is a non-bid, a sole source type of situation, and in talking with Roger today, it would be, it would swear that we suspended rules tonight if possible, and put this on third and final reading, and of course, pass it tonight if my fellow council members and majority agree. I think this is a great deal, and you can go eighty, twenty, and you're on the short end, you might say, as far as funding is concerned. And as I said before, this will be included, our, our portion of it, if this would pass, the one hundred and seventy thousand would be part of the two thousand eighteen appropriation budget.
Do you have a motion for us?
Let me ask Roger if he would like to add anything.
Yeah, this is the standard ODOT urban paving program. Anytime there's a state route that runs through the city, they do their studies and then periodically save those routes. We've done in the recent past for State Route five eighty-five, State Route three, and State Route three oh two, so.
Thank you.
There you go. I, I was going to see if we suspend the rules, and then after we get to that point, open up some questions.
I move to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Albright is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Canapick. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Canapick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
The rules are suspended, Mr. Albright?
I move for adoption.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Albright is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Now, Mr. Sylvester.
I guess the only question that, that I have is, and maybe Roger knows, what's driving, I guess, the timing of the project?
Oh, it's ODOT's schedule.
Okay. Because I guess in my humble opinion, there seems to be other places around the city that, that maybe are in...
State, State Route.
Yeah.
So, it's...
So we can't, we can't say we love the eighty, twenty setup, but, you know, we'd rather, we'd rather put this off for a couple of years. I mean, I was just curious.
Good, sir, it's already in the program.
Okay. I guess from your perspective, I don't know what, I don't know what their, what their priority list is like, but I guess I was kind of just shocked to see, you know, that area on the, on the docket already. I mean, I know, it just doesn't seem to need a resurfacing right now, but, but I think it's a great deal for us to only put in twenty percent and get the project complete, for sure.
I think it was two thousand three or two thousand four, I think, when the last project was resurfaced. So...
Well, it certainly would dovetail nicely in the fact we just got our section of Burbank Road going to be finished, and people are traveling, and so we'll have a nice stretch of hours.
What type of timetable are we looking at with that?
It should be first party guest year, excuse me, wasn't it?
Okay. Ninety days, sixty days?
Yeah, that's right, ninety days, maybe sixty, depends on weather and schedule and contract.
Will the road be completely closed, or they'll just close it on the lane?
They'll maintain track.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
They'll widen out, I think, there's five lanes most of the way, so they'll maintain track.
Right.
They have to for the business, so.
Right, so it's not going to be like Burbank Road where it's just completely shut down.
No, it's not a reconstruction.
Yes.
No.
So that, that nice pavement that still is on top of the surface of our roundabout, is that going to be all resurfaced?
No, no, those are...
Okay.
It's in north of that.
Yeah.
I mean, they're going to go right around that, though, they're going to stop and then pick it up?
They're, they're a little bit north, that's in the city corridor.
Okay. Thanks.
And what is that, roundabouts these states anyways, isn't it? They can pretty much do what they want, but they're not doing anything.
But we don't want to pay for twenty percent.
No.
Any other further questions? Seeing none, Mr. Apollo, would you please call, please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Canapick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
All right. Resolution number two thousand seventeen dash forty passes. Resolution number two thousand seventeen dash forty-one will be presented by Mr. Sanders. It is slated for three readings. Mr. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Resolution number twenty seventeen dash forty-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs, to accept and apply such funds if awarded, and to execute any necessary documents in connection therewith, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, I have an estimated cost in this project of waterline replacement and pavement resurfacing on Brookside and Oakley. Estimated project cost is nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars. If approved, the Ohio Public Works Commission will fund three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars of the project cost with grant funds, remaining costs coming from capital improvement funds of one hundred and eighty thousand and water funds of four hundred and two thousand. At this point, the project is scheduled for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. The city's portion of the budget, or project, is budgeted for twenty eighteen. Request is to authorize application for and the acceptance of the three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in grant money from the Ohio Public Works Commission for replacing the waterline and resurfacing on Oakley Road between Burbank, Arthur, and Brookside Drive. Project will install roughly five thousand millennial feet of eight-inch ductile iron waterline, fifty water services, and ten fire hydrants, and then also resurface the streets. At this particular point in time, the approval on this, the application's already been submitted, and the passage of this legislation is necessary as to receive the funds. And with that, I would motion to suspend the rules and place this on third and final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders, second by Mr. Albright. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Canapick?
Yes.
The rules are suspended. Mr. Sanders?
I would motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Canapick. Any discussion or further questions, Mr. Albright?
One of the things that Roger pointed out to me, that we, if you don't mind, we could talk about this, and that is that not only do we get the state to cooperate on the actual replacement of the pipe and so on, which is of course certainly needed, but we also get involvement in repaving after the work is done of Oakley and Brookside Drive. So it'll be torn up, it will be pipe replaced, and it will be paved, and of course, it needs that now before the pipe is replaced. So we get two for the, two projects basically completed with one piece of legislation.
And tonight we did learn about the superiority of ductile pipe.
That's right.
Yes, we did.
Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Canapick?
Yes.
Resolution number two thousand seventeen dash forty-one passes. Brings us to our last piece of legislation, ordinance number two thousand dash twenty-eight. Mr. Ansel, I turn my lonely eyes to you... Mr. Ansel, I turn my lonely eyes to you, do you have anything?
I will recuse myself, Mr. President.
Would you please note that Mr. Ansel has accused himself? And now, would you, when you get that note in that, please read the title?
Ordinance number twenty seventeen dash twenty-eight, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with Baker Properties LLC for certain tax incentives and declaring an emergency.
Are you presenting this, Mr. Sanders?
I am.
That's what I have listed, but sometimes they switch in a lefty, and I'm not there.
So... Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, what we have here is a request to authorize council to allow the mayor to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with Baker Properties for a seventy-five percent, ten-year real estate tax abatement on the improved value of a rehabilitation project proposed for nineteen oh nine, Old Mansfield Road here in Worcester. Baker Properties LLC will commit to making a real property investment of one-half to one million dollars to repair the underutilized eighty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty square foot building, to secure for a confidential client that will bring thirty to forty-five more manufacturing jobs into the city limits, treating at least eight hundred and eighty-four thousand in payroll. Additionally, the work will secure space for ABS Materials, which previously had requested a similar agreement when they worked on this building on a much more limited fashion back in two thousand and twelve. Specific to renovations, the Ohio Enterprise Zone Act, as cited in our ordinance two thousand four dash fifty-nine, allows the abatement to be extended to any entity in exchange for establishing, expanding, renovating, or occupying facilities, and hiring new employees and preserving jobs within said zone. City council previously had approved a similar enterprise zone abatement, as I had spoken earlier, to, for ABS Materials in two thousand and twelve, for the same location. However, the improvements performed were not as robust enough, or were not robust enough to result in a tax increase, so therefore, there was never a benefit, and ABS has since requested the abatement to be withdrawn. Just as a point of reference, this council, at that particular time, voted to approve that abatement five to zero, with two members recusing themselves, simply from the standpoint that they both had financial interests at both ends of that enterprise zone agreement. Baker Properties, Mount Vernon, very recently came into ownership of the building, following a purchase from Worcester Growth Corporation, which had previously leased the building to ABS Materials. Without a need for the additional space, well, let me back up. At ABS Materials' request, Worcester Growth mutually ended a lease/purchase agreement to enable the sale. This followed a change in ABS Materials' business strategy that would no longer require the extensive space that the building offered, without a need for space, and owning, and owing to the building's complicated layout, it was designed for a microfish operation back in nineteen sixty-eight. The majority of the facility has been left underutilized, basically since two thousand and twelve and prior. Most recently, between water intrusion and just antiquated utilities, or infrastructure within the building, is deemed as necessary to bring this property back to being fully utilized. And with that, I would open the floor for any questions.
Mr. Myers?
Mr. Sanders and perhaps Mr. Baker, my understanding is that the hope is to bring a manufacturing operation that's from outside the city, within the city, or within, or just to grow a manufacturing company out there?
Yes.
My question, though, is, the application states that it's for warehousing, but I thought it was to kind of build, to put like thirty employees or something like that?
We have a very strong potential for a manufacturer that's not in the city presently to come there, and very possibly more employees than that.
Okay.
Well, having sat on Worcester Growth, I know the building needs extensive renovation. This particular project will keep ABS and the employees there, plus allow this building to be renovated and potentially serve as a location for a fairly substantial number of new employees. I don't know if you remember, just this past week, Mr. Montgomery sent us a item through the Ohio Municipal Building, or Bulletin, which indicated that municipalities are experiencing an economic slowdown, so, you know, to have an opportunity to potentially have thirty-five more jobs, plus potentially more, it's hard to turn down. I will disclose that, you know, when I asked if Worcester Growth, which I sit on, had to conflict the interest with regard to approving the abatement, since it sold the building to Mount Vernon, is it the, Mount Vernon Enterprises?
Baker Properties.
Properties. Mr. Millay pointed out what the issue was, whether or not the application on its face qualifies under our existing regulations for an easy request, and he assured us that it met all the different requirements, so I guess I, prefacing any vote, that's saying that really should be our focus at this point in time, is whether or not this request meets all the requirements. Mr. Millay, I'm going to put you on the spot, and let you fill in any blanks I left open.
I feel like covers it perfectly. The application meets all criteria, and in fact, actually excels beyond some other applications we have approved in the past.
I don't want to be misunderstood, I certainly am in support of this. My question specifically was, it's forecasting a potential thirty to forty-five jobs. If, for whatever reason, Jerry, the company didn't come right away, or didn't come, I don't think you have to commit to that many to get this. Isn't it something like ten?
Ten.
Yeah, so I just didn't want to see if that weren't to work out, and something else, I know you're an entrepreneurial guy, you'll find something. So, full support of having you fix up the building, I just didn't want to get in a situation where we committed to the thirty or forty-five, something changes and you have to, you have to make shift. I'd hate to see us being an alert where we committed to something we didn't achieve, is all.
We're thirty-five in three years.
Okay, so, and you're comfortable with that? Again, it's more than is needed, but...
And that's a ninety-three thousand for the building.
Okay.
I feel fair, I feel very strongly in my potential right now, plus there's employees there, and there'll be other companies involved.
All right, very good.
Mr. Kim?
Yes, that sounds great. I would hold, I would ask that the administration assure to hold that applicant to the terms of the abatement.
We do every applicant, absolutely.
Well, not always, that's why I bring it up.
It's the TIRC that makes the recommendation.
This is the enterprise zone, I realize, but I would ask for an assurance that you will.
You are assured.
Mr. Sebastian?
When I reviewed the application, just, maybe it was a typographical error, I'm not sure, but in your summary, Mr. Millay, you had thirty to forty-five, and then in the, in section five F, it said twenty to forty-five. I didn't know if that was the same value, and just a typographical error there.
Sorry, I said five F.
If you look up to five C, it says thirty to forty-five, if you look down to ten A, it says thirty full-time, but then five F says twenty to forty-five. I didn't know if there was a different reference there, or it was just an error?
Our understanding is actually, as far as, what is the, I apologize, five F is the projected impact of relocation, and twenty to forty-five or more discussing relocation. Ten A is the actual commitment, estimated number of new employees, the business that has hired at the facility that is the project site. So irrespective of the actual business that's there, property owner, Baker Properties, Mount Vernon, will be the one holding responsibility for that under ten A, so full-time thirty, and then five is just...
Okay, and those five are currently with ABS?
Correct.
Isn't that drastically reduced from what their payroll used to be?
It is. There are more employees than that, but because of change in strategy and location, how employees may have been moving, there's a little bit of flexibility built into those numbers, so that's why there's five.
So that's the number currently onsite, or?
There are seven on the site. Five are committed as...
Two may be relocated to other locations.
But it will retain, maybe half the quarters will remain.
I just note that in the past, as a general rule, even though this meets the criteria, easy is typically with a focus on jobs and economic development, and this sounded a little bit more like a CRA-type focus application to me, just with the, you know, putting the resources into, into the building. So I just wanted to make those clarifications in terms of the jobs. But I don't know if Mr. Baker wants to speak for that.
But still, three jobs.
Thank you for your explanation, Mr. Baker, thank you for your bid.
I would motion to suspend the rules, council, and place this on third and final reading.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders, and it's seconded by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rule?
Sanders?
Yes.
Sebastian?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
The rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders is our second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Any last questions, comments? Mr. Albright?
I assume we all got a phone call from Jonathan? I did, I can speak for myself on that, and the thing that provoked me a little bit was the fact that the actual business that we're, that has been mentioning, has been referred to here, is not named, but after listening to Jonathan's explanation on that, and knowing that it's Baker Properties, Inc., LLC, that will be held responsible for abiding by the agreement, then I'm in support of it.
Okay. Anyone else? Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Sebastian?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash twenty-eight passes. That brings us to the miscellaneous portion, and we will note that after his long absence, Mr. Ansel has returned to council table. So, tonight, we'll start with Mr. Sebastian.
Nothing to add this evening, thank you.
Mr. Albright?
I want to thank the water department for the tour that we had at their facility, the old Bogad building. As I told some city officials while we were there, it's reassuring that when the city does something, takes over a property, in this case, improvements are made, and the building is something to be proud of, and the neatness and the efforts taken to improve it, that I'm sure being very wise and frugal about that, and those improvements shows. And you go away from an experience like this, reassured that this city hires quality people from the top to the bottom, very knowledgeable, and you get the distinct impression that people there take their job very seriously, and they want to do the best for the citizens of Worcester, and make sure that water breaks are taken care of, valves are replaced, and I was thoroughly impressed. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ansel?
Yes, I too would just like to reiterate John's compliments to our water and infrastructure, sewer and valving and pipeline crew, and just as a reference point, we're talking about two hundred and seventy-five miles of water in sewer lines within the city, with over six thousand check valves, that they process about fifteen hundred a year, so they cycle them, check every one, every four years or so. That's a pretty remarkable accomplishment, and the facility and the maintenance and the organization, plus the pride that was exhibited by the staff tonight, was pretty remarkable. Certainly, congratulations for their superlative performance in that area, that very important area of providing fresh water and taking bad sewer away from the Worcester residents, so thank you.
Mr. Kevin?
Thank you. Yeah, I too would want to thank Kevin Givens and Mylan for the tour. I was quite pleased and happy with the organization, it was a very nice building. I was kind of surprised they could do that much with so few people, but impressive. Thank you.
Ms. Knappich?
Well, I'll just say, I reiterate what the other folks have said about the tour of the utilities facility today, and I'd also like to underscore the fact that we were able to purchase that building for a whopping one hundred dollars, which is a great, great benefit to the city, and now we're able to keep so much of our equipment inside, under roof, to protect it for longer periods of time, and that's, that's really fantastic. And then, secondly, I would like to congratulate the city on being named the thirty-seventh best place to live in the United States. That is very thrilling. My oldest daughter lives in Fort Collins, Colorado, it's often mentioned as one of those top cities in Money Magazine, so I can't wait to show her that we're there too, and I'm very, very proud of Worcester for, for being there, and I also just wanted to say kudos to the folks who put on the Arts and Jazz Fest this weekend. It was amazing, it was outstanding. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Myers?
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke. I just want to extend my personal condolences to the family of the young man who passed away Sunday, the senior from the College of Worcester. I didn't know him, but I know, talked to a lot of people over the weekend that did, and he was an outstanding young man. So my prayers go out to the family in dealing with this tragedy at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. As a fighting Scott, that means a lot. Mr. Sanders?
With all that's already been said, nothing to add, Mr. President?
All right, and before I entertain Dean of Council's motion to adjourn, I want to wish him a happy belated birthday, which was Saturday.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Excuse me, speaking of which, I believe it's our president's birthday.
God!
Happy birthday, Mr. Biden-Dyke. I had that on my calendar.
Why didn't you tell me?
Very happy birthday, Mr. Biden-Dyke.
Am I blushing there?
You are.
So, a motion to adjourn by Mr. Albright, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Myers. All in favor, say aye. We're adjourned.
Gotcha.